Let's just recall the meeting of the White River Township Planning and Zones Commission to order. And Julie is ready to do a roll call for us. Okay, roll call, Bob Gagin?
Here.
Don Klein?
Here.
Karen McLean?
Here.
Craig Harris?
Here.
Chris McFlue?
Here.
Patty Sargent?
By phone?
Here.
Susan Lloyd?
Here.
And note that... George is here, George is here. Oh, oh, he's way in the back, okay.
Here he is.
Our Sergeant at Arms, George. Okay, so, thank you Julie, let's, um, look at the agenda. Anybody have any questions about the agenda and the addition? If not, please somebody move to... Thank you, Bob moves?
Oh, Sergeant.
Craig seconds. That we adopt the agenda for the evening, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, we've adopted the agenda for tonight. Now, let's look at the January seventeenth minutes, meeting minutes.
I'll move that the seventeenth January minute, uh, are approved as written.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Don Klein seconds. All in favor of approving the minutes from January seventeenth as written? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, we have adopted the minutes from January seventeenth. Okay, Patty, you're up. Do you have anything to report from Eagle?
Well, Eagle has sent us an approval for a garage in Doomwood. It is a five hundred and seventy-six square foot garage on a cement slab. I have not seen a zoning permit come through. Um, I think the, the name is Bismuth. Um, George, do you know anything about that?
No, Patty, I do not.
Okay, what was the owner's name, Patty?
I think it's Bismuth, S.T.W.A.N.E.R.
And what was, do you remember the address or it's just it's in Doomwood?
It's in Doomwood, yeah.
And so they, that was, uh, what again, it was a permit from Eagle?
It was a permit from Eagle to put a five hundred and seventy-six square foot garage on slab in Critical Doom.
Okay, and that, is that slab there now, did it say?
It did not say.
Okay, so, um, you have that, I imagine, so, um, would you please give George the contact information and, um, George will need to get with them to see where they are on the Eagle permit and make sure that a building permit is not granted until we, till it goes through us. Okay.
We're gonna have to have a public hearing.
Yes, because it's Critical Doom, right?
Right.
Okay, and we haven't seen anything but the Eagle permit.
That is correct.
Thank you, Patty.
You're welcome.
Okay, now, we also got something from the soil conservation, um, a permit. Do you have anything on that, George?
This was for Stan Allison?
Yeah, Stan.
He wants to put a basement in.
Yeah, Stan here tonight? No, Stan's not here tonight, so, um, is, is that all we've gotten from Allison so far?
Yes, and I, I don't know, George, have we heard about anything else?
No.
George is saying no, so, um... Uh, George, again, could you, would you follow up on that for us?
Sure, yep.
We're gonna need an Eagle permit because it's in the Critical Doom and we're gonna have to dig out that by hand. I'm not sure.
I drove up there the other day, it's a single, it's a ranch, it's only like a six-inch ranch, one floor.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I can understand why they want it, but they're in Critical Doom, so they gotta...
Go there.
Process, yeah, okay. Alrighty, thank you, um... George, you got anything else for us?
The only thing we're gonna hear about is the next thing on the agenda, it's renovation, I didn't hear the point.
Um, oh, oh, that was what we just talked about, was that crawl space.
No, no.
The next thing is the extension, which is Steve is here about, okay.
Yes.
Alrighty, and thank you Patty and George. And, uh, Steve, do you wanna present us with the plans? I think George had them up here.
So, can I add one more thing?
Yes, you may, hold on.
Alright, so, I checked with, um, uh, Julie Inspector Troy DeBrock and asked him if there is a permit, um, for the seven oh four four minor park road and trailer that had new electric put in and it also had, um, uh...
Foundation?
Cement rock put in.
Yeah, that was...
For a foundation.
Uh-huh.
He says that they did get, uh, upgrade permit for the electrical. As far as anything else goes, he did not see any other permit issues.
Okay, and we would need a permit, would we, George, a legal permit for the foundation?
Yeah, I have to have a conversation with Troy on that, but... Much as we could have right now, we don't know whether they ever apply for anything to work on that building, so...
Okay.
I did realize that he needed an upgrade electrical, I mean, when it got there, they did not get any building permit.
Okay, thank you, that was an update from the, uh, Tasha Board meeting, yes?
One other question to Patty, is Troy back in town?
Yes.
He is, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Patty, thanks. I'm gonna have to ask you what township you're in, who are you? Okay. Steve and I'm trying, Joe, Steve and Joe. F.Y.K.A., you just told me you're a brother of twins, so I was kinda thrown off there, but, and then my last one. Um, George, can you come up here, please, and talk to us about this? Uh, we're at the government.
And that's the property on Indian Point?
Yes. Hold up, everybody, hold up, excuse me, may I please, hold on, I want, can we start with the, the site plan, the property lines and the setback? Thank you, I'm sorry, being kind of bossy here.
Oh, you're fine.
Otherwise, it makes me crazy, okay. And you don't want to see me crazy. Okay, so, here we are, because what we're concerned about are all these dimensions. Okay, and so this, uh, hash, the line drawn, um, are what you are adding to? Okay, and are you still within the setback? Is this considered, is this considered twenty-five?
This, this is a pseudo-harm, I might say pseudo-harm.
Hi, you're very hot. Yeah.
But, the other part of the equation is that our rules, as you measure from certain point of the face of wall, you use the correct, now, this is an assumption, I think it's just this point, given this dotted line is existing right in the middle, you scale it from this point to that point.
Like the...
Yes, it's over four, it's over thirty, which is a setback for corner line.
Okay.
So, I don't see the issue with this point, I think we're, George said, we don't know. Alright.
You all are interested?
I, I don't know, I'm observing. The question is, my point is, my point is, given the center of the road, this schedule, even out of rules, you just board it for backwards, or backwards.
Give us the agenda for our questions, send your...
Either case, you have all the setback, assuming that it's...
Excuse me, out there, could you kind of whisper to each other, please? Thank you.
My take is that, once again, because of the location of this structure, relative to that area, this is not an issue.
Okay.
They can leave all the work, but I want out there, and take it off, and then, my take, I'm surprised, because this is just a, this is a...
Okay.
Are they going to Google it? No, Google, no.
Because this, this is not, this is not... This doesn't...
No, but it's there.
Well, you're lucky. Okay. Yeah, yeah, um, and we talked about height over phone, um...
It's about, it's about that.
Okay, because are you satisfied?
We're going up, probably, give it a try, four foot, to get these flushes, and that's the only way, only place we're going up, and that's only going to be four foot, that's all I can, roughly.
This is, this is existing.
Everything's existing there, or this is gonna exist, when you're in the land, and you get the flushes, and then, yeah, so, that's, that's only, roughly, four, five.
Are you all satisfied with this? Anything in motion?
I was going to say, we're all just here. So, approve the Indian Point, um, in terms, and we are approving.
Patty, Patty just made a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Okay, five seconds, Julie. Any discussion? Sorry, you got your question next, okay. Okay, and the reason we all had to be in tonight, because this is water.
We were, yeah.
Yeah, we had that. We had to give you our list, okay. Okay, um, all in favor of accepting the site plan for, I have the address here, sixty-three sixty-five Indian Point Road, um, actually, let's do a roll call from the waterfront. Julie? Alright, Bob Gagin?
Aye.
Don Klein?
Aye.
Karen McLean?
Aye.
Craig Harris?
Yes.
Patty Sargent?
Here.
Susan Lloyd?
Yes.
Okay, we have approved the site plan as presented by the contractors for sixty-three sixty-five Indian Point Road, you can get your building permit, oh, they're going in the office to get it right now, okay. Okay. Yeah, we should get it in a shorter building season. Alrighty, okay, now, something a little, uh, controversial perhaps here. I'll introduce this, um, I do have you some maps. Last month, we voted to propose as a zoning amendment that all Kimore's property be rezoned to transitional open space. And, I have very many, the other room? Thank you, very much. Okay, so, the transitional, I'm, I'm getting to what my concern was here, the traditional, uh, tradition, no, transitional open space zone is for land that is contaminated or suspected of contamination, okay? And then, it can't be developed for any reason until whatever parcel is involved is proven to be, um, appropriately cleared by Eagle as far as any of the contamination or suspected contamination. And so, when I took a look at those, um, the modeling of bloom maps, you all understand what the modeling is, it's not that they actually tested every single bit along the way, but through ground water movement and soils, et cetera, these are the likely places that contamination went through the ground from the Eagle's concept. Okay, so, there was a lot of property involved that is not owned by Kimore's, the new DuPont. So, that was the two thousand and eighteen modeling, and so that alarmed me, I'm sorry, Patty, let me move that.
You're fine.
The, uh, so, Eagle sent us some new groundwater, um, modeling based on recent, um, samples, what, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, sorry, I won't, I don't know. And there's less area under a bloom or over in a bloom, however, that modeling went strictly on testing. And it's testing for six, I believe, contaminants, um, hexachloroethane, chloroform, a bunch of, um, the products that were done there, the C one thirty-two's and the C one fourteen's, whatever they were, okay? So, um, I'm not as alarmed, but put that on top of what we brought into with the Skegan County Health Department and their permitting process, it goes back to a discussion the planning commission had, oh, a year, year and a half ago, about can we ask for more tests done for, uh, a well permit? So... Did you all get those, were you able to open those, those maps, so, okay. So, I'm bringing it up again, um, to see if you want to consider going beyond, um, the, uh, former DuPont property. The new map is June eighth, twenty twenty-two, so...
Yep, so, if a person wants to put a well in it, they would have to get a permit from this, um, Eagle, per, hired that, you have it tested?
No, no, um, right now, if you go to the health department and ask, um, for a permit to take a, for a water well, they test the water, they send it out for testing. Depending on where you are in the county, they have different criteria. For instance, in a lot of White River Township, they now require testing for common agricultural, uh, chemicals that may have gotten into the groundwater, okay? These chemicals from the former DuPont locations are beyond those. And so, what we've been talking about as the planning commission is, can we ask the health department, when you look at the parcels within this modeling for Eagle, can you also add to those tests the chemicals that have been shown to be there in neighboring surrounding properties? So, there's that, or, um, and or, you could include these parcels, what few parcels are occupied with property in our transitional open space, so... There are four different types of... So, um... I don't know if you all, I'll try to, this is carbon tetra chloride mapping. There are the test sites, and then there are, um, the red lines are where carbon tetra chloride exceeded drinking water standards.
Sue, perhaps, can we just explain, the, the red line to the west crosses Johnson Point, and then to the east, how far does it go? Forward, White Sands, or past White Sands, how far?
Um, it goes all along the waterfront of where the former White Sands Resort was, and then hooks back up.
It goes to that point that's on the west side?
The, what we call a long point?
Yeah. I don't know if that's what you call it, most extrude or, or most carry.
Yeah.
All of those parcels and all of those homes along that area are on Montague Municipal Water.
Thank you, Patty, yes, even the ones, um, well, the ones further toward town aren't in our township, so...
No, but there is, uh, there's water, municipal water run out there on that side of the hill. Now, they will go down the hill and out to Long Point, but they will not go back off the hill on, uh, West Old Channel, um, to that area because they would have to have additional pumps, and they would need additional, um, water.
Okay, and, and some of it goes west towards Santa Water Association?
The municipal water does not.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
And we know that municipal water, they don't have any to spare, but they will not provide municipal water. Um, I think, if I'm reading the maps correctly, some of the homes that are under this, um, bloom are on those, um, Kimore's provided whole house water filters for, and so that might have to be done. So, when it comes down to it...
For the water.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not gonna be municipal water, but they possibly can get, uh, whole house filters, and that they'll be auto-transporting, or removed on most of it.
Yeah, so, there, there is a section that is assessed right now as, um, undeveloped or residential vacant within that zone. So, thank you, Mission members, what do you think? I know that the health department does, in, uh, I can't remember what township it is, maybe it's Skegan Township, where they have some industrial parks, that they do test for particular chemicals that they suspect might be there in the groundwater. Yeah.
So, are we discussing at this point, including those pieces of property along with Kimore's on the transitional space?
Yes.
Or are we just discussing having those outside properties have to test the water?
Well, both, I would suggest in lieu of adding to the transitional open space, that we make a very definite concerted move to have the health department check if those should come up. I have no idea if any of them are for sale right now, but...
If those properties are Eagle or, uh, blue, kind of our responsibility to, to state out a danger sign or something, you know, maybe not the people living here right now, but there's other people coming along, and, you know, they should be aware of that, I mean, how many years ago did we want to buy a, a nice house in Long Point? I mean, it'd be nice if the city had found out and done something about it before.
Yeah.
I've learned prior to, yes? That are bought through, uh, we're gonna take it, you know?
Yes, and some of them have those whole house filters from. I don't know how long... Patty?
If we hold your, if we hold your transitional open space, and the people didn't watch them, would we be responsible to buy their houses?
No.
Good.
People all go...
Should have been told in the first place.
So, we can, um, yeah, and of course, it's a zoning amendment, so we can have a public hearing on it, and everybody would get a personal letter whose parcels are affected by the change. But it does put a, um, obviously, a burden on the property owners.
Yeah.
And it would put a burden on the health department to follow up on this, and as we often say, in today's world, it's fire where, so, I mean, we can publish this information, but...
We're going to identify all the lots that have a blue, regardless of it being under Kimore's property or not, so, if we identify all those lots, can we not, now, some, uh, notification in favor that these lots have problems in that they must be checked by the county health before they're bought?
Um, well, we would rezone it if anybody buying property were to look at...
Oh, that too.
Rezoning land property, yeah, but we wouldn't be obligated to publish where...
I know, it's fire where, I understand that, but at some point in time, we've got a little common sense that we can't, people buy those property only to come back and say, I can't build that. So, I think your idea of transferring all those lots to transitional is probably there to do it.
I agree.
I concur, um, but we shouldn't, it should make a difference whether it's Kimore's property or someone else's, uh, you know, there's pollution, well, there's pollution there.
Well, I'd ask, um, the county's GIS if they can take the Eagle information and do an overlay on our contest map, um, our, uh, D, our platform, so that we can identify it, and maybe by that time, we'll have a better understanding from Eagle, what this means.
Do we have to check, do we have to check with the, our township attorney before moving forward?
Well, we do anyway, for to, before we can hold a public hearing, we have to have Cliff write it up and tell us what to publish and all that. And we haven't done that, we have not done that yet for our move to get Kimore's into the transitional open space.
Well, I think it's a good idea, personally, because I would modify property that was going to the danger of my children, or myself.
Yeah.
Well, some of those outlying wells on this chart here looks like they're, yeah, very close to the unacceptable limits.
Yeah.
As of last year.
Yeah.
That does not mean it's going to be there five years from now as it continues to drain.
Right. See, I don't understand what exactly, now that I'm holding it, is the, the red lines are about. Because the red dots, if there were red dots on this, and there are some red dots, but they're on comores property, that is definitely way over.
Yeah.
Acceptable limits of tetra chloride ethane.
Yeah.
Or. Yeah. It isn't as great when it appears from the private well sampling that Seek requested and was done a couple of years ago. I know my house was involved in that. It appears from those well testings that Pearson Creek is absorbing it all. That it's not passing west of Pearson Creek. But there's a whole lot of property between Pearson Creek to the east. So I'm, I'm still not satisfied with the wells that they put in here in 2022. But anyway, we're, Seek is meeting with Eagle in April. So if we could put a decision off tonight until at least next meeting, so we have some definite boundaries. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Alrighty, so.
I believe that we need to inform them.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just not prepared to call, call out individual parcels yet. Is that okay, Patty?
Yeah.
Okay. Alrighty.
First three.
Okay, Julie, do you know that we discussed this and it's going to be tabled until we can define actually what individual parcel we think might be affected?
You need to have a word first.
Yeah, and, and we need the names so that we can, um, send a letter of a, a public hearing to them. Okay. Alrighty. Yes. A question? Can it wait till public comment?
You are making sure you're telling me now?
Sure. Well, I'll, I'll try to answer it, Claire.
Are you able to make copies of the list of chemicals that they're testing for?
Um, I will refer you to Seek for that, okay, Claire Schlaf. Is there anybody here from Seek that could help her out with that? Okay. All right, I'll get with you later, okay? Um. Moratorium, any, any comments, any news on that? As far as I know, we're not in court as of this moment, so, okay.
Who did come and pick up the FOIA yesterday?
Okay.
And, um, they finished paying for it, so we're all settled up there. And, um, from right now, any correspondence that we get for or against FOIA is not going to be included in the FOIA because the FOIA is over. FOIA is the Freedom of Information Act and we reported on all correspondences, uh, regarding FOIA and included all of them and, uh, they will no longer be included. However, I will, if it's sent to clerk W R Township, we'll bring them all to the planning commission and to the township board. Never.
Okay, and we got some in the mail. I think you got all the, um, this appears, what came in the mail appears to be what was emailed as well. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Patty, because I think even though it's printed, I'm pretty sure.
I explained to the person that wanted us to leave them aloud that we don't read everything aloud. We would never be able to go home. It would be easier. So we're not going to read it aloud, but all of the planning commissioners will get it by email and that they would be able to read it individually.
Yeah. Okay, I know we've gotten a lot emailed. I'm going to put new on this one that I haven't personally seen for you to look at, Patty, and you can put it in our file, okay?
All right, I'll be here now, bye.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Okay, that's all we know. We may get me in court sooner than later, but, um, until then, planning and zoning training opportunities, we passed out four sheets. Last time we had talked about the Michigan American, Michigan Association of Planning and Architects, architects and planners. Patty, I can't remember what that acronym stood for.
It doesn't matter.
It was a planning. It was a planning association.
And we looked at it and it wasn't possible.
It wasn't possible the way we had hoped to be able to do it and, and it was going to be very, very possible. So I spent some time with the Michigan Township Association. Found out we do indeed, of course, have a membership to the Michigan Township Association. We don't have the kind of membership that gives us free training, but there are two options. MTA now has this, if you looked on the sheet that has the logo on it, right in the middle there, step up to the plus level. If we pay another thousand dollars, our entire township team will have access to some 25 different, um, programs, webcasts.
So that's very difficult.
Um, and so I figured out the two that I thought were most interesting to us are the Intro to Planning and Zoning and the Rules and Functions of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And it would be over that thousand dollars if we all went. Because at the membership price, the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is a three-part series, which is a deal for $94 each, but it would indeed have to be individuals who signed up for it. And the Intro to Planning and Zoning, um, which is also a three-part webinar, is $123 each. So without even doing the math, you can see that signing up for, for a thousand dollars for the whole township gives us a lot of training opportunities. And I suggest doing the plus membership because the kind of things that are in the premium membership is more for townships that are more developed than ours. And then.
When are, when are the training sessions available?
Anytime. They're.
Okay.
We could, we could buy it tonight and stay up all night and watch it.
So, um, because it's a thousand dollars and I only have, um, jurisdiction over a hundred dollars.
Yes.
Uh, this has to go to the township board for approval.
Yes.
So I will move to, uh, step it to the township board for approval to get the plus membership so that training is included.
Can we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Craig, second, Julie. Um, since there's money involved, oh, discussion, sir.
I, I think it's really important, we're, we're going to have a bunch of new members coming on board who have not had any training.
And.
My training was done back in the place to see.
Yeah.
So I'd like to be retrained.
Um, and things have changed. I mean, the whole enabling act has changed, so. Um, all right, can we have a roll call for this, Julie, please? Bob Egan.
Hi.
Don Klein.
Hi.
Karen McLean.
Hi.
Ray Harris.
Yes.
Patty Sargent.
Yeah.
Susan Lloyd.
Yes.
And you have the list now. Um, you know, there was a page that I think was print that has the whole list of them, but what we will do, um, oh, thank you, sorry. We have a planning commission that's approved purchasing, the township purchasing, the plus level MTA subscription, the plus level MTA online learning subscription. So we may take classes for free. Thank you. And we will all get our own sign on. So, um, once this is paid for, Patty will give MTA names. We can add names at whatever time. I got on today myself and got a password, so I'm in. I can't do anything with it, but I can get in and see all the stuff on the site. Um, you'll be able to look at all, all of what MTA has to offer, which is a whole, whole lot there. Very, so much more sophisticated organization than back when I left college.
It would be really great for everybody to get the newsletters because there are three with a formative.
Yes, and you can get the newsletter online, so you don't have to. There's the newsletter and then there's the magazine. The township gets the magazine, right, Patty?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um. Given that we have a room full of people, I propose, unless, did anybody research planning commission bylaws and I want to talk about them? Okay.
There's quite a few.
Oh, oh, you have them. Okay. What are you going to talk about?
I have nothing written on it.
You printed all 60 pages, huh?
That's only one. There are three or four different versions of the modification in each one. All depends on what state you go to.
Okay, well, you're so good at this. How about you pick one or highlight, because I know this is going to be for townships, big and small, right?
I got an example of one of the other ones from Michigan, one of the Michigan townships, and then also, uh, an example from Michigan State University.
Okay, and that's Michigan State University, so it's a really long one, right?
Right, that was 64 pages.
Yeah, okay, and then the, um, I didn't have my printer to print it. Um, so the one that is from a similar size township or?
I don't know how size it is, but it's, I never heard of the township itself. It's Charter Township.
It's a Charter Township?
Charter is a name.
Oh. Okay, Charter. And it's in a Charter Township, that's interesting. Okay, um, did, did you have a chance to compare it to the Michigan State?
They're all, they're pretty much the same, but, you know, slight variance between them, but not, not significant.
Um.
If to choose one, I would go with Michigan State, which is not easy for me to say.
Blue and yellow, you know, you put blue and yellow together, you get green.
Yeah.
Um, I don't find that it is a Charter Township in Michigan. Because when I Google it, it just comes up the Charter, 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 Charter. What a Charter Township is. Oh, Oakland, welcome to Charter Township. Uh, it's in Rochester, Michigan, so that's going to be close to an urban area and that's more like a suburban area.
This is Charter Township of Union, Isabella County.
Isabella.
It is urban area. It's not close to it.
Isn't that near?
No.
Okay, this is Rochester Road, I mean Collins Road in Rochester, Michigan. Oh, no, 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 see there, yes, Charter Township of Oakland, it's not the Charter Township. Okay, alrighty, so let's continue that. Would you be able to, um, for our next meeting, perhaps take some time to?
Compare it?
Compare and, and cross out what might not apply to us from the corporate to the Michigan, Michigan State corporate.
I'll cut and paste.
Okay, thank you very much, Don, that would be a huge help for us. Although you know I love to read this stuff, 64 pages, larger package. So, um, Julie, please, please note that we discussed the bylaws and we're going to table any decision until next week, or next month. Don will bring back some research, more research.
I'll cut and paste it, then I'll send out copies of it to everybody. All right?
Super. Um, you mean paper copies or online?
Online.
Online, okay, I was going to say, yeah, we can come get them. Okay, hey. We are at that point in the meeting that you all came for, um, public comment. Um, Craig, would you mind, um, picking up the list from that there's this little sign we want to speak? Is there anybody not on the list that wanted to speak? Okay, there's Ken.
I'm always going to say that.
I'm not reading your name this time.
Always going to say that.
Okay, Ken, what do you want to say?
So let's go back to the testing real quick with.
Testing?
Coors property.
Yeah.
Right? So I didn't want to interrupt you back then, but let me have a real quick say so on this. So we bought Indian Point Trading Post in 2003.
Yeah.
At that time, Gordon Clark was in charge of the new topic company back then.
Okay.
He would come over.
Can you stand up?
He would come over in June every year and test our water for free.
Your, your well water?
Yes. So when, how do you say it, she moved? Whatever. When they took over, you get a hold of Bracken now, which he's the caretaker of that property. They don't, they don't do that anymore. Why?
Unknown to me, I guess, because, because they're not good neighbors. I didn't say that.
Well, I want to, I need to get a hold of somebody so I can get their water tested again.
Yeah, get a hold of Bracken.
Uh, no.
No?
No.
Get a hold of Satya.
Who?
The, um, the manager.
I don't know who that is.
Okay, um.
If you can point me in recognition, that would be nice.
Yes, I will, um, I will send you his email and after we're all done, if you could stay and give me your email.
I just want everybody in here to know that if you live anywhere within that pool, if you haven't had your water tested, get tested. So that, that end of Williams Road, I don't want to mention that guy's name, he has the water filter system. How much is it going to filter out these chemicals? I don't believe in that at all. The reverse osmosis, I don't believe in that either.
Well, I do, I do.
We, we have a division and the guys, they say it's good, but we actually went out and had it retested and it's not good, it's bad. So it is what it is. Thank you.
Can I see the sign in list so I can see the names? Oh, sure. Okay, in fact, will you, there's somebody else out there that had, put their name on the list to want us to be, yes, sir? Stand up, give us your name, please. And what's your last name?
Roger Starry.
Roger Starry, S T A R R.
Roger Starry, S.T.A.R.R. what?
I.N.G.
Oh, Starry, okay.
Do you wanna put my name on the Wester's?
Hold for Julie.
And Starling?
Starring.
Star.
S.T.A.R.R.I.N.G.
Starring, okay. Hi, Roger.
Hi, Patty. Patty's my neighbor.
Okay, thank you, Roger. No, I mean, you wanted to say something.
Oh, I just wanted to put me on the list. No, I just wanted to simply state that I support the solar initiative with and without compromise.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing more than that.
Okay, thank you. Whenever you're ready, Julie, just start calling names.
Okay.
We're gonna be kind to Julie tonight, because she's gotta write everything down. Thank you. Fritz Quon.
Hi, I'm a White River Township resident, and I just wanna speak in support of the solar installation in the township. I had solar panels put on my house last fall, and I think, living in White River Township, I think the township has a great opportunity to address the need for renewable energy. And I hope that you will approve the solar farm either at a compromised form or full-size.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Claire Quon.
Hi, I am a little the same address as this guy does, and, um, I think the overriding issue that we're considering here is global warming, which affects the entire planet. And I think that as residents of this plan, we all have a responsibility to do what we can to mitigate the harmful effects of global warming. And as my husband said, we do have an opportunity here to do something tangible to replace fossil fuels with renewable energy. And we also have the benefit of all you good people who are promoting facts and discussion of this issue, so that we all know what we're talking about and we can hear each other. So I am strongly in support of a solar installation, with or without compromise. I realize that some people are affected more than others, and I think those people should be heard, and if there's a negative impact, some means taken to mitigate that for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Wacernagel.
Hi, Lauren Wacernagel, I live at 10137 Old Halle 99, in the middle of the solar right post area. So I'm ready to request that the Planning Commission put six hundred and sixty-foot setbacks on the property lines and include a property value protection guarantee in the updated solar ordinance. I'm requesting that the setback is from the property lines, as our land and home values are both important to the residents' economic well-being. There's a universe, I'd like to talk about land values for a second, uh, property values. There's a University of Rhode Island study, and the property values are expected to decline one point seven percent within a mile after the construction of the solar ring. Houses within one-tenth of a mile has significantly larger property value impacts of negative seven percent. In the data, over two million transactions were compared. So, do a little math. The calculation determined the total township projected property loss is to take these percent declines, multiply them times the number of homes that will be negatively affected, times the price of the home sales in White River Township last year. So I did a little math on this, and the numbers show that we will have a combined projected property loss of one point eight five million dollars. That's a conservative estimate. The calculation I used used the median sale price, two hundred and eighty-five thousand last year, where the average price is three hundred and ninety-three thousand. Also in the calculation, there's acreage next to these proposed arrays that will have negative impact, but were not included. So we've heard it said that the property value loss is minimal, and one point seven percent does seem small. However, when you add this up for the whole township, one point eight five million is a large economic impact. Over seventy percent of the average American's network is in their primary residence. So we have to consider the economic impact to neighbors and the community as a whole. In the Michigan zoning act, it says that special land uses should be designed to protect natural resources, the health, safety, welfare, and social economic well-being of the landholders immediately adjacent to the proposed, proposed land and community. Losing one point eight five million dollars of land value in White River Township would hurt the economic well-being of the residents. Therefore, I recommend a six hundred and sixty-foot setback and property lines to avoid the risk of significant negative economic impact to our community, and I also recommend a property value protection guarantee written into the ordinance. I've attached, um, the university article, the calculation of the property loss, and the proposed property value protection guarantee language.
Thank, thank you, Lauren. You can get it too.
Thank you.
Dan O'Ryan.
Uh, I'm just here to voice my support for a couple of solar installations for third dollar compromise.
Thank you. Melissa Lawrence.
Thank you so much. I'm a resident of White River Township. I feel like sometimes I'm regurgitating the same information that I do it because to me, it really speaks for itself. This, what I'm about to say is about supporting our township's blueprint for where, where we are and where we are going. That is our township master plan. The planning committee, as you all know, is the legal blueprint for determining all of our zoning ordinances. One of the objectives of the goal of our master plan is to limit or restrict the constriction, construction of structures, I can't speak tonight, and the alteration of the landscape so that natural views and vistas are not destroyed or significantly altered. Everyone in this room might not know that this solar project, this solar plant, would cover up to seventeen hundred acres. This would make it the second-largest industrial solar plant in the entire state of Michigan. This is in a fifteen-point-nine-square-mile township. We are one-half the size of a normal township. It's crystal clear that this solar plant does not align with our master plan in any way. This large of a footprint would decimate the township, destroy its open spaces, disrupt wildlife movement, and upend residents' lives. Significant stress is already being suffered by residents, especially those who would live alongside this power plant. This is not contributing positively to our residents' health and welfare. Additionally, the land would be completely graded and the topography changed. This is certainly significantly altering the landscape, let alone the loss of the natural views and vistas. To me, it's unacceptable that a tiny township should be expected to give up our quality of life in order to supply power to the grid so that Big Tech, Amazon, et cetera, can meet their renewable energy goals. A reasonable expectation for us would be for our township to supply our own power in order to be sustainable. If this was truly about being green, it would be about employing solar in a smaller microarray or whatever would be enough to supply the power for us, and we would be energy-independent. To me, that is true sustainability. Industrial solar is not. The proper size and placement of solar is the absolute key. We must ensure our solar variances contain reasonable provisions that protect our community, which include appropriately sizing and locating any proposed array and making certain it fits within our master plan. My biggest request is that the size is appropriate for the size of township that we are. Thank you.
Scott Bedrow.
No comments, probably not.
Lori Coleman.
Lori Coleman, forty-eight seventy-four North Sunny Street. Um, I've come to the city before. I've been in support of the project, with or without concessions, and I just wanted to share that we have a number of people that are responding to the White Light River Climate Action Council, who do support it, both here in the township and out of town. And here we get letters.
Thank you. Mitch Coleman.
Hi, Mitch Coleman. I live in Montague. I support the project.
Chris Rogers.
Chris Rogers, I live just over on Level 30 here. Um, first, I know you have a big meeting, planning meeting coming up next week. Thank you, thank you for all your hard work. I know you've been doing a ton. I hope during your work session that you hear the voices of township residents above all the outside noise on this issue. We live here because of the ideals set forth in the master plan. We are trusting you with our well-being and quality of life in the future. Thank you, guys.
John Horn.
Hi, John Horn. Uh, I live in Whitehall. Um, I support the solar array, either with compromise or without. And my biggest reason for doing so is because we live in a free, capital society where property owners should be able to do what they want with their property, and entrepreneurs should be able to pursue profits without a lot of government interference. Thank you.
Mara Horn.
Hi, my name is Mara Horn. I live in Whitehall. As the Planning Commission considers amendments to the solar ordinance in the coming weeks, I appreciate that you're taking your service seriously. In the coming days, I ask you to bear in mind that utility solar farms are a legal use of agricultural land by the property owners and that there's a demonstrated need. Thank you.
Brandon Vanderlees.
Brandon Vanderlees. I support the solar project. It's a way for people, actually the farmers, to diversify their income and be able to continue farming as a way to expand their operation and just be able to sustain that network.
Margot Haynes.
Hi, I'm a fifty-year resident here, but, well, sort of through my parents, and now live in Montague, but my kids own property here. Um, I live here. And, um, I feel so sad when I hear how difficult it is to handle what remains of Key Moore's DuPont and what's been done to the township and all the uncertainties and the danger. And I know there's a lot of fear that this will be more of the same. However, I've looked in detail at the project, and particularly the pollinator plant part of it, which would be really an attraction to the pollinators we need more of in farming, would be a great boost. And I also feel for my friends who have residences near the solar array, and I do support looking at compromise possibilities, maybe a smaller total footprint for a small township. But, uh, I do support the solar array in general, and I think in ten, fifteen years, with how peaceful this area remains, and when we look at our children, how proud we will be that we've gone forward with it.
That's it? That's it? Anyone else decide you wanna ta...? Okay, all righty.
Craig Cuttman, seventy-nine twenty-five North Blue Channel Trail. I don't have an issue with green energy, but I do the size of this project. And one of the sessions we had played a video on the wall talking about, um, what's reasonable. And I heard a number, somebody said that White River Township needs fifty acres of solar to meet their demands. So at seventeen hundred acres, we're being asked to supply electricity for thirty-four other White River Township, well, thirty-three other, who would be the thirty-four. I think that's extremely unreasonable. Just three times, four times what we need. Is that a reasonable number? I don't know. But, so what we're being asked for is not. But I also got a paper in the mail the other day called Investor Today, and the whole thing is on solar energy, what is happening. I'm in favor of a limited solar energy, but what caught my eye about this article, it's called, uh, Vertical Solar. There's, you can't see, it's pretty small, you pass around. They're sixty-foot tall, they're five to an acre, and according to the information inside, they put out as much electricity as a six-acre flat panel. I guess I'm saying I would like to see the township in their ordinance review, consider mandating the solar be vertical. There's no excavation other than the spot this thing sits on. Five to an acre. They look kinda like a glass Horace or silo that you see like up at Kessler that, only shorter, they're all sixty-foot. People can look around them, beyond them. These people that are gonna get stuck living in the seventeen hundred acre, if it's allowed, they're gonna see nothing but the backside or the front side of the solar. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. If you wanna look this thing up for yourselves, it's, um, three-sixty solar LTD. We got a big wet sand. We need minus acres also, six-to-one reduction.
Hi, I'm Charles Smith.
Okay.
One-one-four-four-zero, Old Halle 99. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I thought it voiced my concern. I thought it sweet of all the non-residents to come, voiced the support. I don't know if you guys came on the bus or how you got here, but I'm glad to see all the other residents here that are opposed and remain opposed, so, thank you.
Name, please?
My name's David Frederick. I've owned property in White River Township for twenty-some, twenty-six years, I think, and I've lived here full-time for seventeen years. I'm not against having solar, a solar project in White River Township, but I'm also not for the project as proposed. I've driven up and down the major streets within White River Township and within the project outline. And I've seen neighbors directly across the road from each other, one with a sign that says Harvest the Sun, and the other, less than fif- less than fifty yards from me across the street, that says No Industrial Solar. I've seen other houses that are side by side where one sign says No Industrial Solar, and the next sign says Harvest the Sun. Two neighbors that, or many neighbors, that were probably friends, that all of a sudden have been, because of this project, have been thrown into being against each other. That's a sad thing. If no middle ground can be found, we will end up with a community that is even more divided than it is now. That is a sad thing. I would propose that we find some middle ground, a compromise that doesn't create big winners and sore losers. Something that we might consider would be having a citizen committee with a certain number of people, ten people on one side, ten people who are opponents, and ten people that are proponents, to sit down and see if we can't talk to each other with open minds and the willingness to hear each other and understand each other's feelings and thoughts and positions on this project. If anybody here is interested in that, I would like them to come up and see me after the meeting and see if we can agree to have that kind of a conversation. the meeting and see if we can agree to have that kind of a conversation without Shelley, without Frank, just people trying to talk to each other and come to a solution that all can, that nobody gets exactly what they want, but they don't end up being even angry with each other. Thank you.
Was there a handout in the bar?
Yeah. Phil Dean, White River Township resident. Say, you know, driving down Hancock Road, I see that there's a sign that says Zone Community. And I really feel for the farmers and the situation that they're faced with. And I also agree that you have property rights, you should be able to use your property as you see, within the zoning ordinance. And that's where I really want to follow that. I can't support this project as it sits now. It's just far too large for the township. It would destroy this township's natural beauty. And you can see that clearly from the installation down the road. I would say that for anyone that has purchased property and gone forward with the idea that they were gonna remodel their house or build a house with the existing zoning laws and the township master plan, all of a sudden now you're confronted with this notion that all the work that you did, all the planning, your investment, your investment in your property, could all be put at risk by this project. And so to that extent, I would just say that if the township, the planning board, really take into account the people that are gonna be negatively affected by this, it's, I'm not against solar, I put solar in my own house, but I don't want 1,700 acres of it. So there has to be some room for some sort of compromise.
And, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, and there's somebody, is there somebody in the, George, behind you that wants to speak?
No.
Okay. Someone was just scratching their head there. Okay, yes, sir.
I'm Brad Warson, 6657 Meyer Park Road. I've been to these meetings before, I've spoken, but I hear Stacy Lawrence's comments, this comes down to scope and size. It's not against solar, it's about what's best for the community and how it fits inside the community. And I appreciate those people here from outside our community that have a different opinion of that, but you don't have to live with it, we do.
Yep. Okay. Oh, hey, Kim.
Hopefully, that's from White River Township, just want to put that in.
Name?
Kim McInnes. 100-year residents, owners, whatever. Anyway, we are for the solar array and hopefully with a compromise.
And Bruce, did I see your hand?
Yeah. I'm Bruce Wecker, I go 10137 Old 99 down here, and we're right at the former Law Day Action. And I'd just like to say we're a community, we all go to the football games together, we cheer on, everything this area's done. And the way I look at it, we've already contributed solar farms down on Old 31 and Sixth Road, and it's way bigger than to support this area and Montague also. So I think we need to look at this as a community, not just individuals wanting this or that. So I'm opposed to the project.
That's it? Okay. Okay, all righty. Thank you all. Next. Trying to remember what day of the week it is. Monday? Is it Monday?
Monday.
Tuesday? Tuesday. February 21st. Oh.
Next Monday, 27th.
Next Monday, it is not Monday.
You might want to see, but the rumor is Tuesday.
It was, it, thank you, February 27th, here at 1:00 PM. We have a work session with Nathan Maymed, our consultant planner, not attorney, like the beacon said. Need to publish a correction. He's not an attorney. He is the planner that we hired to help us write zoning ordinances. Okay? So that will be here. It's an open meeting, but again, as some of you have been to our work sessions, you know that we really do work. So public comment will be probably welcome at the end. But I ask you all to keep your comments to a minimum so we can work, okay? And continue to send your comments to the township hall. We've got a stack of them. We have a good idea of how many people feel which way. Again, I appreciate, and I just want to put in a plug for keeping up this community involvement, okay? After the solar is done, a lot, that was a, it's, we're not just about solar, okay?
You might want to reiterate that we actually do want to get involved with it.
Oh, yeah, we do read all your letters. Yes, we do. We take notes. Okay, I'm gonna entertain your votes up in the first.